Good morning, welcome Commissioners Court, February twenty fourth at nine. We have a quorum with Commissioner White and Commissioner Decker absent. Carry you certify the meeting was probably posted.
Yes, sir.
You'll please rise for prayer and pledges, Sandra.
Father, with number about before you this morning. Asking for your presence in this courtroom. If you may doubt, have these gentlemen in the direction that they should go for the residence of Walker County. I would pray, Lord, that you heal those that are sick and needs, those that are struggling. I always love you and we thank you for all that you do for us. Father, may your will be done this morning. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Consider Republic forward which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You sit down, you sit down after the break. This is my, my hundredth time.
I didn't get any citizens input, anybody got any? Yeah, considered agenda contains fifteen items.
I've got my question in, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Moving, saying it all approved, raise your hand, motion carries. Number sixteen, discuss and take action to authorize purchase with fifty percent deposit upfront for wireless point-to-point equipment upgrade. To the JP two location to be paid out of budget funds.
Morning Dan.
Morning. I'm suffering this item before court to upgrade the point-to-point wireless for the JP two location. With that location, the amount of users with ag extension wasn't fully staffed. And from time to time, there's some signal issues from other equipment that's in the area. So the plan is to upgrade them to the same equipment that is at the JP three location. And then to repurpose the usable current equipment for the OEM to senior center connection. So we're going to free up that equipment to reuse at another location. It requires a fifty percent deposit, which is normal for this vendor.
Was this the same thing you got there?
Yeah, yeah, we had to upgrade ours.
I thought we had already done.
We did theirs, we, when we both, when we bought it, what, five years ago now?
Correct.
We kind of put a, a, at, at that time, a, a good unit at both locations. But like I said, the traffic's increased and other people are around us, so we upgraded ours. A year or so to a little bit better machine, and this is pretty much the same receiver.
Correct, it's the same receiver, it's just a, it's a little bit higher quality.
Wait a minute.
And it's, it's less affected by lower end equipment that's in the area.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand.
Good.
Motion carries, thank you Dan. Seventeen, discuss and take action on condition of tree on courthouse lawn.
Morning.
Morning.
Photos didn't come out very clear, but I'm sure you'll, well, we've all been watching this tree for the last four years. Four years ago, this tree was hit with lightning. Soon after that, we lost a big hunk out of the top. Luckily, we didn't, we didn't have any property damage or anybody got hurt on that. But in this photo right here, we can see the angle of lean of the tree.
Yeah.
We're getting to where we're concave down here and more convex on the uphill side of it, which is a strong sign that this tree is ready to fall.
Okay.
If it falls, it could hurt somebody.
It's dry.
Cause of property damage, I recommend we remove it.
Okay.
So they're going to grind the stump?
Yes, sir.
That's my motion.
I'd like to, when we remove it, I'd like to consider putting a, a pecan and back in, it's, it's a pecan tree, put another pecan back in its place, that's the tree of Texas and let's do that.
That'd be in my motion.
I'll second it.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Eighteen, discuss and take action on the purchase of twenty twenty-five Dodge Ram crew cab four by two from Sames Auto Group in an amount of five, fifty thousand, one hundred dollars. Using tipped contract two four zero nine zero one to be prayed out of Rodden Bridge three. Your motion, Bill?
That's my motion. I got a money pit truck, I just gotta get it off. So my motion to approve agenda item number eighteen.
Moving, seconded on favor, raise your hand, motion carries.
Thank you for your help.
Nineteen, discuss and take action on purchase of a RACON IM four thousand copier in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents from D I contract. Forty-four thirty-five.
And this, the funds will be on the copy replacement funds.
This is for Mr.
Uh JP two.
I'll make a motion to approve on nineteen.
I'll second that.
We have a JP technology fund that would be eligible stills also pay this fund.
There's a bunch of money in it.
JP technology.
So I guess to keep it all fair, Mr. Patricia, what have we done in the past?
Typically, we, every equipment is paid from that source, there's quite a bit of money in there, so it can be, it can go either way.
Well, then I'll amend my motion and, and move it to the technology fund instead of JP technology fund.
Motion carries.
I'll second that.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty, discuss and take action on purchase of forty-eight KW Kohler generator powered JP three and Rodden Bridge three from McCathy Electric through by Ward seven, three, three dash two, four, in amount thirty-nine thousand, four forty-three. That's already been approved once.
Yeah, we approved it as part of our budget sets, I'm running off to the side for that.
Make your motion?
Make my motion to approve agenda item number twenty.
Forget it, boy, we got you in a barrel now, I'm gonna second to.
I was gonna hold out a minute, moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries.
Expect that in return, Bill.
Twenty-one, discuss and take action on award solicitation C two, three, six, zero dash two, five dash zero, two, one gasoline and ultra-low diesel fuel.
So remember, we have a training. It's the contract for diesel. We relayed a solicitation and this is the bid that come in and I wanted to explain to you guys. The bid and I may get Laura to help with that, but she won't know.
Morning Laura.
Morning.
Yeah.
So thank you. Our three bids that came back, Sun Coast, Hardy and Navasota Oil. The differential is the freight, state tax and the margin. For it to drop, scroll down, there's additional fees as well to build parts of the county in order to deliver the fuel. You cannot figure the transportation thing rate as a rate per location, same as the patrol and storage. On Hardy, that was his bid, he did, he uh did not bid three, six, two, three. But it's supposed to take transport trucks to deliver the fuel, no one has the body. And that sort of oil bid, S C, so this fee is in addition to whatever the going rate. Right pricing of look, that kind of the, whatever that day is for the fuel. Right now, we're ordering through the T A S B cooperative for Sun Coast. And their fees for the differential are listed. Also on the sheet here.
Laura, you're talking about the additional fees being the less than five hundred gallons.
Right, right, because our tanks go. Less than five.
Well, it says deliveries less than five hundred gallons will have a two hundred fifty dollar delivery. Yeah, and, and so that's, I mean, that's probably, probably never happened, so it never happened anyhow.
Was the Navasota win every line?
Yeah. Do what?
The Navasota win every line, am I looking at that wrong?
Looks that way.
No, no, you're, you're looking at it.
We've dealt with them before, right, they're, they're, we, but we worked with.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're a main supplier. Is that who y'all recommended? Are we gonna do a secondary?
Uh, we have, uh, Sun Coast.
We can keep the T A S B contracts like in our back pocket. Use it again if he falls through, we can, it's an, it's an ongoing contract that we just keep up with if we want to use it.
That's what we did on the back of them, month ago.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's cool, yeah, that's what we've been doing, yeah.
Yes, and we'd like to just keep it that way.
I'll make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-one, select the Navasota Oil as the provider of our fuel for Walker County. So.
Moving, seconded all, favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-two, discuss and take action on awards solicitation C two, three, six, zero dash two, five dash zero, zero, nine, motivation at Moore County Courthouse, County Court of law.
Okay, so this has been going on for a while. We let the solicitor, uh, for the. County Court Law Courthouse, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, courtroom as well as the judge's chambers. And the secretary's office, we had asked them to submit their proposals in phases. To do the courthouse and so they hopefully wouldn't be displaced at all of the, all of the same. This as well, it needs a little bit of explanation, so.
So, okay, so the phases would be, um, the courthouse or the courtroom and the back hallway, phase one. And they're gonna tear it down, remediate the mold, build it back up, while they're building back up, they're gonna move to phase two, which would be judge's chambers and the secretary's office. Um, these three company, these three companies were responsible with their bid. And see the breakdown in their cost for worst case scenario, if the mold is more than four feet from the bottom of floor up. What it would cost in addition to that. One of the companies in the middle there are R and D I, um, put a third party clearance fee for thirty-five hundred. However, we can use the company AMS who did our mold remediation protocol a year ago. And maybe eight seventy-five for him to do the third party, make sure they got all made. So, um, as you can see, it is an RFP, it doesn't mean that lowest cost wins. It just means that who can perform the work, uh, best value for the company and meet our needs as well. So that is what you guys are okay.
All right, so, so generally with an RFP, there's a, a score sheet that goes with that.
It's right here.
Oh, I don't have that.
Yeah. In my phone. Do the forty, thirty-two, five, six, twenty-six.
There they are, okay. That's for that.
Mm-hmm.
Blends in like a total cost of list points.
Yeah.
They are, was that forty?
It's, it's ranked this way.
Thirty-two, six, and then it's in page twenty-six.
So the only hangup I have on this, Miss Cheryl, is you took all my notes that I had. And now we.
Price is.
And I don't remember who was what, honestly.
For?
You know, what I'm getting at is, is I know we don't have to accept.
He probably got them.
The cheapest, the cheapest one. And he scored them, I don't know how everybody else scored them, but I scored them pretty, pretty hard.
Yeah, I did too.
And, uh.
Put your notes.
And then, uh.
And I don't remember who I had on top.
And then you take in the worst case scenario. At first, I mean, his low bid is high bid on the worst case. About twice.
Um.
Worst case, they got forty-three hundred.
Yeah.
So if you want.
Twelve thousand dollars.
We've got a workshop scheduled and I can pass, we can pass this.
I would like to look at.
At the workshop, you want to do that?
All right, let's pass on twenty-two, come back to it.
Fly into workshop.
Thank you.
Twenty-two is ours.
Yeah, we're gonna come back to it. Twenty-three, discuss and take action on the purchase of two Surface Pros with air cars for this, for two seventy-eight district.
This is requested to come out of contention.
That'll be a motion, we got a photo somewhere.
So is it, what is this for?
So this is for Tracy's Court, uh, two assistants in the courtroom for laptops.
iPad, Microsoft iPads.
Okay. And they didn't have them in.
They had an old secondhand computer from court from downstairs and they took those upstairs and they've started crashing with the amount of work they're going to the three counties.
Okay, sounds good, I'll give you a sec.
Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-four, discuss and take action on facility request twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two, allowing children safe harbor to place twenty-two hundred and forty-five pinwheels. And this is safe harbor out of Montgomery County. That's all for y'all.
Hold on just, so Ms. Patricia, on, on, on twenty-two, I had a quick question just come to mind, is, is that paid by percentage? I'm not twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, so it's split between the three counties?
Yeah, and while we're back on that one, it is, um, it's dual, it's an iPad that you can drop and use it as your PC in your office, so it's a multi-use, not, not just an iPad.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, you're good. So.
But yes, we will build the other ministries based on what just.
Okay.
So whatever y'all want to do on Montgomery County, putting twenty-two hundred and forty-five pinwheels on the court lawn.
Well, it's for good cause, in my opinion.
Okay, that's your motion?
So I'll make that my motion.
I'll say.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-five, discuss and take action on agreement between Walker County Precinct Three and City of Riverside for trees remaining that cost not exceed three thousand dollars.
We have a interlocal in place with them to do projects and they called us once it come trims and trees down the side of the road, so this is a project. Should take us two, three days, so my motion is to approve agenda item number twenty-five.
Sorry.
Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Discuss and take action on appointment of Trey Holloway to the Board of Emergency Services District One.
We had a, a board member need to step down, Trey was a longtime member of the board. And had some time to come back, was interested in coming back to the board, so he'd be a, a great addition.
Who got all?
Clint Wilson, okay. And so I'll make the motion to approve agenda item for twenty-six.
Sorry.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-seven, discuss and take action on clarification or modification of purchase procedures for acquisitions of less than fifty thousand dollars made through the purchasing agent's office. And pre-approved by Commissioners Court and the insurance of payment for the purchase.
I'll tell you what, if we're gonna have a purchasing workshop anyway at the end, could we just include, let's just put this in that one there too?
Yeah. All right, and to get ready, twenty-eight, public hearing concerning flat number twenty twenty-four dash zero, three, nine replata hills, eight lots, eight, nine and ten block three, section six of the Wildwood Shores subdivision, time is nine eighteen. Anyone here to speak upon that? You like the normal stuff we're doing, Andy?
Yeah.
I'll say it again, anytime you can combine lots out there, it's a good thing. So. All small.
All right, time is nine nineteen, public hearing is closed. Number twenty-nine, discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-four dash zero, three, nine replata lots, eight, nine, ten block three, section six of Wildwood Shores. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Number thirty, discuss and take action on Tartar Business LLC request for variance to section three point three six of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding groundwater certification requirements for plat number twenty twenty-four dash zero, three, two Tartar Manor subdivision.
So, as the courts aware, we have a requirement for groundwater in our local order and then we also, this normally be made. Under subdivision, uh, state law got passed, so it requires either that we get a copy of the report or the court make a finding. Uh, but there is evidence that there is groundwater, but. You guys have a report in front of you, it's in the backup. Backs here, answering questions while I'm.
Morning Zach.
Other side. My expertise, very limited, all groundwater availability, so Zach's here, yeah, I think you also have a, uh, original letter from Zach in there as well.
Anything to add, Zach?
Unless you have any questions.
Yeah, this is, you know, this is a, this is a tricky one, because it's basically asking somebody to sign off on, yeah, there's water there, go, go get it. That's, um, it's scary, but reading the documentation that they're, that they supplied with it. It's probably, excuse me, as good as a guess. As we can, as we can hope for, and this is precinct two, and I did talk to Ronnie this morning about it, and he was, he was okay with it. So, what do I need, what do you need from us, the ocean, to grant the variance?
Grant variance, and in doing so, you also need to make a, um, finding that there's credible evidence, uh, for the groundwater. Because otherwise you can't grant the grant, if you violation state law.
Using blue bonnets.
Right, so the, the only thing I will point out is that, um, historically, we've done some of these, we're granting the ranges.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, many of the cases where we've done these, the exception of one, I think we have one in New Waverly where basically the owner presented their own documentation. Um, the backup was provided through by a licensed geoscientist or engineer. There's not any requirement in the code on, on what is credible evidence.
Yes, yeah.
We got Zach.
Zach will reiterate that too, there's no, uh, there's no bar really laid out in the code, so it's.
Yeah.
Falling up on the courts to, to make the decision on what is and what is incredible evidence.
It was like, we, we had our continuing education last weekend, we sat in on a, a class that was about all this. It was very interesting, so.
Yeah.
Get, get ready, yeah, yeah, ti- typical legislature, this is what you're gonna do, y'all figure it out.
Yeah.
But, um, I, I, I don't like doing them, but I mean, you can't expect somebody with four lots to pay that kind of money.
Right.
Um.
I'll make the motion to approve agenda item number thirty, as presented, granting the variance to section three point six of the subdivision. I don't much like the second sentence that you asked me to.
Second.
Moving, seconded all, favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Thirty-one, discuss and take action on Cock Communication LLC request for variance to onsite sewer facility regulations for Walker County. For lot one, block one, section one of Homestead Hills subdivision.
I'm wrong, I think the current code requires any structures occupied in the part of the IP connection. Pretty system, at this pace, that can be for temporary, sort of disabled, out of construction, probably to be there in twelve months. They wanna hook into a bladder, have a license public come out into the water during that period of, that's their request.
We, we've done this a couple of times in the past, so I'm kind of wondering, maybe another conversation. If we need to build a, another paragraph, you know, that allow it, so we can have the checklist, so like, yeah, you can do that, but here's this and this and this and this and this, because we really don't have any framework for the guys, so. Other than, other than twelve months.
In, in the past, we've, uh, uh, made them bring you receipts from that, and I think that still needs to.
Manifest and stuff, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, just to make sure it's getting done, I mean, not saying that they're, they're not gonna do it, but at least it justifies what we're doing a little bit.
Two, two conditions, is it they would submit copies of their pump out to our office and do is that.
For a period of twelve months.
And you can see that.
All right, that's my motion, Dan, did you get all that? All right, so the motion is going to approve the variance on onsite sewage facility regulations with the. Stipulation they provide, pumpage receipts and records, planning and development, and for a period of less than twelve months.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Y'all got a workshop, y'all wanna go?
Let's get purchasing body bodies here, that we can.
Try to go back to purchasing workshop and skip thirty-two for now.
Yeah. Fuckin' bro.
Yeah, I'll let everybody go.
Did, did y'all decide not to do thirty-two?
Yeah, we're gonna go, go next second, we're gonna skip that.
Come back and get it.
Okay.
Okay, Miss Cheryl, floor is yours.
Okay. So would you like to revisit your votes?
I would. I think it was.
Me, you and.
Larry.
Or Butch.
You were in the committee, right, Larry?
Oh, that's three then.
That's one.
It's on the bait, man.
Twenty-two.
So these are yours. That's the one, and this is Coles.
Yeah.
And then, uh, Larry.
Let, let Bill have Larry's.
Yeah. I don't know anything about this.
This is the mobile.
This, this is, that's the one vendor and this is another vendor.
Oh, okay.
This is the second, uh, R and D I vendor.
Had my mind set the first time, then I went back and reread them the second time and changed it up.
Sure.
And I don't remember who was what.
Okay, so this is. I see it right now, okay, this. I think, you had asked for.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the scores, the forty to fifty total.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Russ. So what was y'all's when y'all?
Hey, just the opposite, going the other way. Yeah, this is for second third.
Oh, did you? All right.
I had uh A A R on top, looking at.
Okay. Is that who you have on top of you?
I have the third.
You have the third? Okay.
Yeah, you have none.
Okay.
I'm, my top three or four were all right there together, so. Okay, and they were just a couple of points apart. You have to start picking.
Yeah. So we're saying. A A R is. Who we're looking at as far as.
Looks that way. Unless it goes to worst case scenario.
Yeah.
Yeah, worst case scenario, they're not, they're third.
Yeah.
Right?
Right. Thirty nine, one fifty plus the forty three, one forty.
Yeah. But you know, you, you never know.
You don't know, and again, we asked them to provide the worst.
Worst case.
Case scenario, if they had to go all the way up, because this was done a year ago. And uh even though we had mitigated the water seepage into the courtroom and, and the offices. From that time, um I, I don't know how Fesmo grows or anything of that effect.
Yeah. I'm good with them, y'all.
Well, yeah, because American, Americans went to, well, actually they're not, because looking at this, I mean, you're looking at. Seventy something thousand dollars, right, on worst case scenario?
The worst case.
Yeah. Okay, well, I just, like I said, it's been a while, I wanted to look to see how I scored them.
Well, again, that's why I asked for the workshop.
Yeah, no, thank you. Well. You good dude?
Yeah.
No, let's do number thirty two. What, what everybody's here. I'll move that one down there.
No, we got two on, we, we got twenty seven also.
Twenty seven, okay.
Any of your motions?
Yeah, twenty seven, I'm sorry, not thirty two, twenty seven.
So we'll go to twenty seven.
Yeah. Let me get those back, so I missed those. Okay, so I put twenty seven on the agenda just because of um. Process we had that seems really clunky, and it takes a lot of time, and. And it, and it almost jeopardized a purchase that we were making. Every now and then, really in the last couple of years, we've done it a couple of times. Um like in my case, I wanted a, a water truck, so I had the court approve. A purchase up to fifty thousand dollars, which puts it strictly in the county purchasing policy, nothing state regulated and above. Anything close, so, so it's just an us decision right here for that. So the court said, okay, go find one, you're paying for it out of your budget, so like, all right. So we went down and found it, um we shopped around, um looked all over the place, came up with one in Houston. And then we went down there and basically had to ask the guy, hey. Handshake, agreement, but not even a commitment, because at the time, just got to come back to court for approval. And then a two and something, we wait to have the check released after that, well. If you're doing auctions or a, hey, this is a great, y'all need to buy it today, or two or three days from, you know, get the check in two or three days. Having to wait up to two weeks, maybe even more, to get um a check released, couldn't kill the deal.
Yeah, it's a six week process.
Yeah, so my thoughts are, and I, I may call on. Quentin to help me out legally on this, but my thoughts are, if we approve, if my motion was. Uh make the motion to approve Commissioner Precinct Three to purchase a water truck. Um using the purchasing department to ensure compliance um for an amount up to fifty thousand dollars. And authorize the issuance of a check upon um completion of the deal. And that gets passed, then to me, that is. Go down, shake the hand, sign the bill of sale, make the deal, and then call up here, get a P O, get checked, and cut the check. Two days later and pay for it. That's, that's really. To me, being that it's under fifty, that's how we should be able to do, it's like paying any other bill. But, that we can approve, but it just seems odd that we approve the purchase of, and then we come back and we approve the purchase of. And then the check gets approved also, so it's three steps of something that should be pretty, pretty simple. I know you would stand up on me, that's all right.
Exactly what we're talking about happened today. Okay, uh on Brandon's request to buy the vehicle.
No, that was my, my, my truck.
Okay, your truck.
Yeah.
Okay, uh then maybe Brandon's was last week.
Okay.
But there's several criteria prior to making a purchase, and the first one is, there has to be a budget. So if a purchase, capital purchase is approved in the budget. Then Cheryl gets out, follows the purchasing procedures, and it comes back in one step, y'all buy it. And if you want to pay for it at the same time today, then that's all part of the agenda. And so in your case, that's basically what happened today, you did it as a one step. So that can be done as long as you follow all the steps. Now, I'm not sure about yours, but. I'm thinking on that, was this a fifty thousand one?
Yeah, up to fifty.
Court, asked to spend it, and then it became a budgeted item at that point.
Yeah.
Right, you still have to go through the purchasing procedures. Uh it still has to go through Cheryl's office, she still has to do all the state statutes, current policy. And then she can bring it back, you can bring it back, and you can approve the purchase from that vendor. And the payment at the same time. Uh requisition has to be done, so the process is there. It's how it's handled through the agenda process. So like, uh Commissioner Kirkendall uh wanted to buy, and I can't remember exactly which piece of equipment it was. He came to court, asked for authorization to purchase a capital piece of equipment, court approved. Then he went to the purchasing department and found the equipment he wanted, went through all the purchasing procedures. And it came back. There was nothing to prohibit him going through purchasing, doing all of the bid side. Then coming back with one agenda item that approved the budget, authorized the vendor. And, and authorized the writing of the check upon completion of the audit. So the process is there.
So why come the first time?
Uh in the past, we've had uh one piece of equipment. I remember specifically the authorization was requested by the court to buy a piece of equipment. That piece of, of equipment wasn't actually bought until the next fiscal year. So it depends, I mean, it's really up to the commissioners. Before you send it to purchasing, before purchasing does all of this work, before you know. That you're look, exactly what you're looking for, then you come and ask for the authorization and go to court. Nothing prohibits you from doing requisition, getting with purchasing, getting all your homework done. You know, the liquid step, then coming back with one agenda item.
The only place I could see where it would hinder you, any of this, and it's just part of government, is, is auctions.
Right.
You know, I mean, you got to think pretty good ways ahead, you know, to get approval to even.
Yeah.
Go to an auction, you know?
Right.
Uh, so.
And nothing says the court has to wait two weeks to meet either. They have to post and wait seventy two hours, but there is no requirement that on an auction, say. Um if you've gotten your authorization to go to the auction and buy a piece of equipment. Now, the one thing you could change in your policies is that commissioners are authorized to attend au- auction. But you still gotta go through all the steps.
So if you go to an auction, you have approval to buy a piece of equipment. And you say, okay, I'm gonna spend thirty five thousand dollars on a water truck at an auction. If you're saying you have to come back, you don't have the authority to shake that guy's hand and buy that truck. Because you're gonna come back and the court could say, oh my God, thirty five thousand, that's ridiculous, no, that's, we're not gonna approve that. Now you shook a hand, you signed a piece of paper, you're committed, and you came back here, and they say, no, so it's. My interpretation, and I'm just me, that, that initial approval by the court is your approval to go buy that vehicle. In compliance with the, and it'd be adamant still, hey, Miss Cheryl, I need to go buy this water record with what we did. And then, you know, the P O or whatever it is, or is, is requisitioned, and then auditor make sure all this stuff is where it's supposed to be. But you have to have the ability to raise your hand and bid, knowing that you own that, as soon as you raise your hand and get approved.
Cheryl, is there um an exemption allowed for an auction, uh first?
Okay, so discretionary exemption automatic uh for an auction. Uh we have one, of course, with Renee Bates.
Yeah.
And if you find it, but it's just, and, and again, the government, uh two sixty two says that we can do. A discretionary for auction items.
Well, and, and doesn't it fall, so they have to be actually like Renee Bates and Richie Brothers and all that, they have to be a, a certified. Auction companies do that.
Correct.
But it, it's still, I, I mean, so like. Richie Brothers, I mean, they're, they're, you, you know, months ahead, I mean, actually a year ahead, if you really look at it. When they're gonna have the option, so if you something that, you know, you're, you're interested in, then. I, I see where you're coming from, I just don't see how you circumvent getting the court approval to actually go.
Well, you get the approval, you get the approval to go.
Yeah.
And you get, and you get a cap to spend there, and that, that, the approval to go signifies, like in my case, a water truck. We're adding, there's a, a capital piece of equipment coming on board, so we have to come here for that, so you get, you get permission to go. But that still gives you no authority to raise your hand and say, I want that water truck right there, I'll see you in two weeks, I hope, I hope I get it approved.
Well, if you go through the purchasing process, so you can come to court, ask for the authorization to purchase equipment. Through X auctioneer, um in an amount not to exceed X. And then you can uh authorize the uh. We write the check to the auctioneer.
Right.
So you can do your requisition, you can do all of that, but to write the check, that's um.
That's the part you need to go through bill.
That's the part I wanna speed up.
Yeah.
It's not, why do you have to come back and get permission? On something that you've, that you've already been approved two times to go do.
Statute, state statute. A bill cannot be paid without approval of the commissioner.
Right, so that's why at the end of my motion, I was saying, if you authorize them to make the purchase. And to issue the check for that amount of that purchase, now you can go to Richie Brothers or Renee Bates or whoever and say. Click, I own that. Without having to call them back and say, oh man, I don't really own that, and then now you're in a bit of trouble.
Yeah, that one would definitely be a Quentin, we had uh an order of the court a long time ago. That said that when we get utility bills, we can pay utility bills without bringing them specifically back to court. And then we would notify the board in fact. Uh we could pay orders of the court or attorney fees, there was a list of things.
Yeah.
Um that, that actually went before the Attorney General, he said, uh-uh, it has to go to court. Now, Quentin, uh whether or not they could approve from an auction, do, the court could approve to buy something from an auction. Under the discretionary exemption and authorize the payment, definitely a legal question.
Oh, and I remember the deal about utilities, cause that happened right after me and you coming up.
Reason is that way is because they have a, they have a due date.
Yeah, exactly.
You have to pay, you can't wait. All right, you're.
Things are, are starting to.
We wandering a little bit, all right?
All right, we'll get us back on track.
Uh and some of this will be questioning, but at the, during the budget process. Commissioners Court authorizes the budget for various offices of the county. I'm gonna pick one, just more or less random, office supplies. The Commissioners Court approves certain number of dollars for office supplies, supplies. Long as we're spending, now that budget for office supplies, you don't have to come to court and ask every time. Correct?
Not to make the purchase, no.
Correct, that's my point.
Well, they have to do a requisition, Cheryl has to issue a P O, blah, blah, blah. Then they go buy, then get a bill, then we come to court, they authorize that.
Right, because no payment is made till you authorize it. That's, that, that is not in question. But the budgets that you have. We go through purchasing office fees of P O, or requisition, whatever the appropriate terminology is. Place an order, office supply company ships the order, we get the order, when it gets here, a bill goes to the auditor's office. Review and approval, down to Commissioners Court, and everyone's got the check. I believe what Commissioner Doggett is essentially talking about trying to do is. This is where maybe part of this is getting you and the auditor on the same page. You don't have a budget in, at the beginning, in the budget cycle to, for, for the water truck.
Right.
That's right, so you have to come to Commissioners Court to get a budget created.
Right.
The auditor creates the budget.
Almost the court creates.
What, right, once the, a- at the direction of the Commissioners Court. Uh at the direction of Commissioners Court, she creates a line item, you're now spending out of that line item for a very specific purpose. But what the commissioner is suggesting, and this is where auditor, purchasing agent, I mean, auditor is putting y'all way in. But Commissioner Doggett is suggesting is, once he's created, got that budget line for you. Then he should be able just to go to the auction, make a bid, and you'll do the, the, the P O. It still has to come back to court as, as afterwards, for them to prove the final payment of it or approve the check. When the check is cut, that would, I don't know way around that. But at most, this is two trips to Commissioners Court.
And I think that's where you hang the bid, the bill is the check, cause I mean, that's where you, and, and I get it, yeah.
So I'll go, I'm gonna throw a wild card in there, because it kinda messes things up, what if I just put it on my credit card?
Um that's not a legal question.
Purchase it, and I gotta credit them on my credit card, so if I just go swipe for, cause the credit card is all about expediency and stuff like that. If you just go, hey, put that on my Visa, make sure I use the right ones, I got trouble for that.
I think you got a big enough credit, but though.
And the past is that if you have a. Uh, uh to purchase on the credit card, you must have a purchase order. Right, so uh and a purchase order, a blanket purchase order is. Given upon request by the department or purchases from that credit card. With the exception that if it is a capital item. Then you would do a requisition to your credit card for that capital item. The first thing that's going to be checked is that capital item been approved by the court, because that's one of the requirements. Purchasing is going to, most likely, she's gonna review it through all of her purchasing stuff. And she's going to issue you a purchase order for to C B A.
Right.
Okay, then when you go purchase it, uh the vendor's going to try to run it through their system.
Yeah.
If you've got enough money, they're going to run it through their system. Then when we get the credit card bill, we send that to court to approve for payment. Now, the credit card policy says, basically, if you charge anything and court didn't approve it.
Oh, yeah, you still gotta come. You still gotta come and get all that took care of, absolutely, so, I mean, it doesn't come up very often, I'm what, two or three times in the last year or two. But it seems, seems like a clunky process to take a, a three day process and turn it into a four week process.
Well, and, and, and I don't, I mean, I get what you're saying, I mean, that, that trailer you're talking about this morning is kind of a prime example, it takes just. Somebody not turning in a invoice to, to drag it on another two weeks, you know, and uh. If there's any way to shorten it up, I just.
Yeah.
I, I would love to see it, you know, like you said, where, you know, we approved it, then we can get a check cut for. X amount of money, because it's already been through court, but it falls back to the, it's never paid until we pay it here.
Yeah, the, the two legal things.
Yeah.
First of all, creating a line item in budget.
Yeah.
That, there has to be that, so that, that's at least one trip to Commissioners Court.
Right.
No way around that. And then there's the final one, which is the court authorizing the payment, the final, you know, cutting the check, that, that's gotta happen. It, it, it should be possible, maybe. It, it, it should be possible, maybe, well, it's one. See, the legal thing, this is more appreciate, and Cheryl. Being able to do those, that would be the only two times you have to come to court.
But it'd still take you a month. I mean, you figure.
Well.
You prove it two weeks and then two weeks again to.
Well, court determines when you.
Yeah, and, and exactly, but I wouldn't ask, honestly, I mean.
No.
Personally, I wouldn't ask to have a special session and waste everybody's time over something I'm trying to do. Well, and that's. You know, unless it was emergency.
And that, that's kind of where you, you know, we all. We all strive, all the departments yourselves as well, at, at budget time to anticipate all the things you're gonna need during the course of the year. It's happening. As soon as you realize we're gonna finally need a new piece of equipment. Then you could just, you know, ask for that.
Yeah.
To have that line item created.
You still come, you still come.
Yeah.
You're still gonna come back and. Okay, I'm, I'm not gonna be later, you know, make it any longer. I just wanted to give the, the discussion out there that maybe it's something we can throw in the let's look at it pile. So I don't want y'all to change your thing today.
We can speed it up. I'm all for it.
Yeah.
If we can do it right.
You got anything else in purchasing workshop?
I think I'm good.
All right, let's go back up to number twenty-two, discuss and take action on award solicitation. C two, three, six, zero, dash, two, five, dash, zero, zero, nine, hold the bait.
I'll make a motion, we award the abatement to A A R P Incorporated. Do you wanna put a dollar amount on them, Miss Cheryl?
No.
Can't get it.
That's right. Well, yeah, cuz they hadn't, they hadn't accepted.
They gotta open to see what's in here.
Yeah. Well, no, it's open. I mean, this, this is the money.
No, I'm talking about when they bust a wall out and find out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The whole thing.
I give you, I give you a second.
Yeah.
Move and sing along, favorite, raise your hand.
I thought we'd hit it.
We got a little bit of insurance on it. We.
It'd be out of projects.
Okay, okay. Can we put that in the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I carry that on there. Yep. Sounds good. All right, twenty-seven, discuss and take action, clarification, modification of purchasing procedures.
Pass on that.
Pass on that. All right, no action. Thirty-two, discuss and take action on issues associated with Piney Woods Ranch subdivision. We're gonna go into executive session under five, five, one, point, oh, seven, one. And Tom, Tom is nine fifty.
I would, I would really like.
We can.
Andy. Andy. Stay with us. He needs to be here for this.
All right, time is ten fifty-eight. We're back from executive session. No action will be taken. Public comments? Questions? Yes, no action on thirty-two. Question, public comments, questions for media commissioners court?
I don't have any questions, but I think we'll go ahead and say that we submitted our text dot transportation alternative grant on time last Friday, so that's the preliminary. Probably a couple of months, we'll find out if they think it's worth doing a detailed one.
That's around the courthouse.
It's around the courthouse, but it's also University Avenue. We had to make it bigger than last time because they said ours was too site-specific, so we visited with the city and looking at making University Avenue a one-way street from twelfth all the way to seventeenth with a big nice sidewalk on the east side, about twelve-foot wide, shared use kind of a deal. So anyway, turned that in, kind of very preliminary, but it's about a three-and-a-half million dollar grant application we turned in, so fingers crossed.
Time the square to the college and city hall and our juror parking. It's also going this way too, on twelfth street.